Of the Tacoma Park City Council, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Coles.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Kareshi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Schultz.
Okay, terrific. This is the last evening of our Monday budget work sessions. Uh, thank you everyone. Oh yeah, alright. Um, and I just want to let folks know who are tuning in that Councilmember Kareshi is on the phone this evening. Uh, so you will hear his voice but not see him tonight. Um, and so now I'll just turn it over to the city manager to take us through this evening.
Thanks very much. Um, this evening I've kind of labeled it the unremarkable presentation because this is the, the kind of standard information by departments. I have identified some highlights. Um, if we have staff here available to answer any questions that you might have. And, um, and then after we get through this and answer your questions, we can deal with some reconciliation matters. So I'm going to be covering the various, um, the non-departmental and then the departments in the city budget. My first one, uh, talk a moment about the personnel schedule, how many FTEs we have, uh, what's proposed for FY 17 is 165.15 FTEs. Um, this increase from 163.23 is one new FTE for the environmental code position and some smaller increases in part-time staff. One of the things that I did is I went through and identified, uh, the portion of the various operating budgets that are Tacoma Park tax-funded. Uh, and, um, looked at what the percentage was of the numbers of FTEs based on tax-funded FTEs. And I'll show you this graph. Basically for these various departments, the area in blue comes from Tacoma Park property tax and, uh, income tax. And the areas of red include, um, tax duplication, which is why in particular police is so large, uh, various grants, um, registration payments, fines, uh, state funds. And so it gives an idea about where the, um, yes, that we try to make good use of taxpayer funds. Um, the cautionary note here is that if there's problems with tax duplication payments, it does affect a number of FTEs. I'd like to first, um, call Alexis up to the dais and talk just for a moment about the non-departmental budget. Um, this has to do, this pays things that don't attribute to departments, so it includes our insurance, it includes some of our grants. Um, and because this is an area where, um, it's a fairly substantial amount of money, I did want to have this item addressed this evening. Hello. Uh, if you could talk just a minute about workers' compensation and health insurance, that'd be very helpful.
Um, one of the things about the workers' comp and the medical insurance is that these are things that largely we can control, um, by our usage and of course by safety programs. The two of these items together take up almost about 10% of the city's two point, uh, the city's $25 million budget. So having these two items kind of under control are very, very helpful. For the workers' comp insurance, uh, we're looking at about $150,000 increase from this current fiscal year. That is painful. Uh, with such a small budget for the city, that $150,000 means FTEs, it means programs, it means things like that. Uh, why do we have these? Part of it is our experience modification rate. That's actually set by the National Council on Compensation Insurance. It's not something that's done by the insurance company. And what they do is they take a look at our losses compared to the losses of other similarly situated organizations. Uh, in our situation, that's actually, um, other municipalities. And this current fiscal year for FY 16, we're at 1.26 for our modification rate. What we're looking at for FY 17 is 1.57, and that means that we are going to be paying 57% more for our workers' comp insurance than would a general, um, municipality. So there are a couple of things that we need to do as an organization in order to improve our modification rates. One of them, um, is to take a look at our injury rates and the number of incidents that we have. Lets the insurance companies know what they can expect in the future. So the, the larger number of smaller incidents that we have, the more likely it is that there's going to be a larger, more expensive incident later on. Additionally, uh, we need to take a look at our return to work programs for individuals who are injured and not able to return to full capacity in their current position. Um, but we can develop and design different opportunities for people so that they can return to work, do something meaningful while they're still trying to recover from their injury. So those are two things that we can take a look at, um, as far as the workers' comp. And then we can also strengthen our safety awareness by educating our employees better and by assisting them with better processes to do the work that they need to do. And then the second thing that I wanted to talk about was the health insurance. Um, we're paying about $2 million in medical premiums right now annually, still a very large number. And the industry expectation for an increase for FY 17 was actually about 15%. Part of that was due to the expenses associated with the Affordable Care Act. Fortunately for us, um, we only got a 4% increase, so we were excited about that to say the least. So that saved us about $100,000 in premiums, which we'll probably use to help kind of offset the workers' comp. Um, but the reason why our medical insurance is doing so well is because we've got a very good usage rate. Um, people are doing the preventive care and that's kind of helping to catch things earlier on, you know? Early detection means, you know, less expensive claims later on down the road. Some things that we can push to kind of help to continue to improve this trend of smaller increases would be just to continue to promote healthy lifestyles. Um, we do have a wellness program that we're working on building and increasing. And then also continue to just make sure that people get the preventive care that they need.
Yeah, questions? Uh, one of the things I want to mention in terms of workers' comp, we did have, um, now I'm thinking of the wrong word. The, the person came to analyze how our sanitation workers collect trash, how they jump off the truck.
The ergonomics audit.
Ergonomics, uh, whole study, and that's been very helpful. Um, it's also given us some, um, suggestions, I think, over time for some different kinds of equipment that we'll, we'll be looking at. So, um, that was, I think that was one of the areas where we had seen some problems before.
Right, yeah.
Um, with the, just the wear on the knees as the guys jump off the truck and get back on.
Yeah, with the lifting, jumping, a lot of quick movements, jerking movements when they're lifting the trash or the sanitation department.
Can I, uh, just interject?
Uh huh.
I mean, I've watched these guys work the routes as we all watch them, and it seems like they're always in an enormous hurry. Uh, which on the surface say, hey, that's great, we want guys, we want our employees to be efficient. Uh, is, do we have, is there, are they?
There's a big incentive.
Yes, are we incenting them to hurry?
Yeah, they're, they're on task work, which means, uh, through the union contract, which means that when they're done with the route, they can go home.
And they still get paid for the full day. So if it takes them four hours to do their work, they still get paid for eight hours. It's a six hours, et cetera.
Doesn't that run counter to safety?
It does, and we do have union negotiations coming this year, and that's something that I'll be wanting to discuss with the union.
Yeah, I mean, there ought to be like something that says that there's, there's a limit to how quickly you can do things. Because, you know, if you get it done in three hours instead of four hours, it isn't going to get you anything. You're still going to have to sit around and kill an hour in the, you know, I don't know what, but just, just to make it so, because I, these guys work hard and they work fast and.
They do.
And you just sort of think, of course, maybe it's because I'm so damn old, but, uh, I just wonder how they, how they can do it. And so anyway, I've made my point.
Yeah, yes, we'll look at that.
I, I did that question about the modification rates, is that what it's called?
Mm-hmm.
Is there an appeals process for that, or do you feel like we actually got a rate that reflects?
I am not aware of an appeals process for it. Um, they actually set it for the, all the industries in the entire country.
But however, we do sit down with the, with the company that has our workers' comp. And we go through to make sure that they have the right information and where there's a way that we can clarify a discrepancy that's in our favor, we work on that.
And right now you're talking about, uh, non-police, or are you talking about the police also?
Everyone's under the same coverage.
Right. And if, you know, police officers and public works staff are the ones that have the highest incidents.
But you said that we had, um, more injuries compared to similarly situated communities. Does that mean other communities of our size are avoiding that, or does it just mean this is what's happening with communities these days?
I think it's a combination of the two. Um, I think some are avoiding better than others. And then we also have to look at the actual cost of the claims. So if you have five claims and they're just a medical only where the person just needs, I don't know, a Band-Aid on their knee, something simple, then it's not going to be that expensive. But if their knees are broken, of course, those are much more expensive for the same five claims.
So we're, we're gonna get that.
Okay, Councilmember Mail.
Uh, thanks for the presentation. If you could just provide data, and I don't think it's critical to the budget, um, but rather sometime in the next few months, um, that would show the baseline of how many injuries or, and, and lost days we've had, uh, associated with accidents, or whatever you think the sort of relevant numbers are, um, for like the last five years or something like that.
Okay. I know we've got historical information. I know it's not for the last five years, but it is actually in the budget.
Okay.
For this year. We're looking at those at the benchmarks.
But we'll look and see if there's some other information that, that might be useful.
Yeah, additional.
Okay. Council, oh, Councilmember Schultz.
Uh, thank you.
I don't know if you mentioned this earlier, but is there a safety officer for the police department and, uh, the, uh, public works department?
I would say for the police department, probably Ron Hardy, he's our emergency management, uh, individual. For public works, I don't know that we have someone that is specifically identified.
We have had a little safety team that has representatives of all the departments though.
Okay. And last year you gave a presentation and you said that you're going to have these programs so that, I guess we wouldn't have these high rates of, you know, claims.
The losses, right.
Yeah. Did, did the programs get off the ground? How are they going? I don't know if you already mentioned that.
I have not mentioned it.
Okay.
Um, we are still working on developing them.
Okay.
I do have a series of probably about 400 different trainings that we can use. And these are quick, you know, five-minute meetings that the supervisors are able to have with their employees, just, you know, be mindful of this particular thing, whether it's working in the heat, working in the cold, lifting, those types of, um, topics. So we are still working on pushing all of those and getting our, um, getting our committee together to look at how we want to go ahead and put those out.
And during the negotiations with the different unions, do they request safety, or is that an issue for them, or?
It has been a topic of discussion with the AFSCME union.
Okay.
Um, because we do want to make sure that everyone is safe.
Right.
It has not been a major concern, however, as, as part of the negotiations, it's just been something that we've discussed.
We actually would have to venture that with both unions, it's been more management that has expressed the concern than, than the unions.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And Councilmember Mail did find the chart, and it's just interesting to know that in FY 15, it looked like we had quite a number of days off because of injury. It was over 1,000.
Yeah.
Compared to our average, which looks more like in the 300.
We had, we had a bad time then.
We had some serious injuries. Um, police, we had one officer that actually did end up retiring. And so that's, that's a big chunk of the time there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm going to go on. Thanks very much. Um, the rest of the presentation, uh, I am going to kind of label as the unremarkable, but I'm happy to stop at any point if you've got some questions. So first one, general government. And, um, identified the amount of money, um, proposed to spend, slightly less. Uh, it does include, um, $20,000 for the county lobbying assistance. And, um, there's, um, from the cable operating grant, if that MOU is agreed to, um, part of the grant would, um, pay the cost of two information systems, FTEs. And these are the FTEs. Uh, half of a, half of FTE gets switched out of general management to housing and community development, and the city clerk gets a little bit more of part-time hours. For police, um, in police, the expenditures increased by $710,000. The variance is primarily due to the two, um, code enforcement officers moving from housing and community development and the addition of the FTE for the environmental code enforcement and education person. Very slightly increased hours for crossing guards due to the change of, of times for the schools. Um, 53% of the funding, um, is from other sources, 47% from the county, 5.6% from the state for the police aid.
Now, that county number, 2.5 million, that has not changed for the last, what, three years for you?
That's right. Um, the, the other police protection, county police rebate has gone up slightly. Um, that's right, they've frozen our, in tax duplication funds.
Right, and our expenses keep going up just like theirs.
And just like theirs, yes.
Thank you.
For public works, there's no change in FTEs. And.
What was the one that said 10 that used to say nine?
I'm sorry, what?
The solid waste management?
That was, it, from FY 16 to FY 17, there's no change.
I'm sorry, I'm looking for the.
Yeah. We did add one, one position last year. And, um, public works also gets, uh, money from the county for roads maintenance for, uh, tax duplication and some parks money, um, and state highway user revenue. Uh, recreation goes down a very slight percent in, at FTEs. 29% of recreation departments, uh, funding can be supported by registration fees and, uh, space rental.
How is that compared to previous years?
Um, it's about the same. For housing, um, housing and community development consolidates from six to three divisions. It goes down a little bit. They get half of a person from the general management, from the city manager's office, and they have two code enforcement folks moving to police, and some minor changes with part-time people.
Can you go back to planning, planning and development stays the same, basically?
That's correct.
I'm sorry, what's the breakdown of housing and community services, the 3.1 new positions?
Let's see. I'm, I'm sorry, what is it that you're looking for?
I'm just looking at the last line there that had .90 in housing and community services and four.
That, that combines the folks who had been in landlord tenant and net stabilization. So it's, the, the focus on this is to really look at putting affordable housing planning as a preeminent part of their work. And, it's pretty basic. Um, for communications, um, we have about the same number of FTEs, went up slightly. Um, with the MOU, with the county, um, five of the 5.75 positions, um, are associated with cable-related duties, so can be funded through that source.
And they will receive benefits off everybody at that time?
No, because, um, the 1.75 is for very part-time people. It's a lot of hours, of people, but small numbers of hours. And this just shows, uh, the funds. So 57, 56% of the combined operating costs of communications and information systems can be paid for by cable funds, the operating funds. For the library, um, about the same. 12.3% of the costs are paid by the county library payment. Both the tax duplication and the county library payment were, uh, approved to move forward in the county's budget this morning. We have, uh, stormwater, um, which is about the same. And speed camera, um, which is going down. For that reason, we have very little extra, other than the three positions and some small equipment that is proposed to come from the speed camera. And that is all I have for this part. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, about the various departments. Um, but I think that one of the things that, uh, we're very proud of all the work that we do, it's a lot of work. Um, but the focus in the past two presentations has been on those that are really targeted towards council priorities. And so this is kind of how we do our regular day-to-day work and, um, the way that we're organized for that.
I just have a general question.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you have the Consumer Price Index and usually people benchmark that for most things, uh, especially when it comes to employees. What are our employees in certain departments? Why is the growth larger? I mean, some departments, it's within the Consumer Price Index, you know, inflation saying that. It's around 2%, 3%, some departments, but others are like 5 and even more. I mean, do you look at that, or?
We, well, for pay, we have our, we have our salary survey and we, um, have, you know, we're in the third year of the, of the larger increases. Um, as a, as an overall amount, it averages about a 5% increase. But, you know, some positions were more appropriately compensated, they were closer to the market than others. So some we've had to do some bigger jumps to catch up. And so that's where you see by department, by type of, um, position, by type of occupation, some variances on that.
Okay. And I would just like to say, you know, because, uh, we get such a large payment for police department from the county, the lobbyists, I think, is a priority in their, in, once we finish this budget. Because if that number does not get up, go up, and the general fund has to pay more of the police department, we're going to get to a point where it's unsustainable.
That's right.
Thank you.
I have a question regarding the, um, recreation departments. Um, it talked about under their management objectives, expanding the 55-plus program. Um, I was just curious if you could speak to that, if there's a great demand or what type of programming?
Do you have Mr. Clark coming to the, for you?
Good evening. All right, um, yes, we, we are interested in, uh, expanding our 55-plus program. Um, council approved, uh, last fiscal year for us to begin to have, um, offer programs and services at the Recreation Center on New Hampshire Avenue. Well, we would like to expand those offerings. The offerings that we are currently having up there, as well as the offerings that we're having in this building, are, um, all full. We actually have a demand, um, to add more classes, um, here in this building. They have large waiting lists, um, for services for that population. In addition to the expanded classes, the general recreation classes, um, we wanted to offer a senior camp, um, which will be a half-day camp, um, that would take place next June, uh, for our 55-plus, uh, population.
Great. Thank you, just wanted more. And at some point after we're done with the budget, um, and I know you keep track of the people who participate in our programs, who are Tacoma Park residents and who are non-residents, I'd like to see a report of that when it's possible. Thank you. Um, Mr. Kovar, sorry, Mr. Clark, you have another question.
One of the questions from Mr. Kovar. So I know there's the, um, program that needs here periodically for the developmentally disabled adults, and I think that that was funded partly recently by the CDVG.
It'll start actually paying for that in October. That's when it takes.
So will that continue to be sufficient to, or at least partially subsidize that, or how will that, how will that work?
Yeah, I mean, that, that goes for the year, so.
But is that for a specified number of participants in order to be able to participate? Is that?
Yes.
Uh. I mean, do we know how many that is, or would there be a bigger demand if more people could get funded for that, do we think?
Well, right now, um, that program isn't a program for, that, that we actually offer. We actually contract with that, um, group, um, and they actually rent, um, the room, uh, from us. We, we identified that there was a need, uh, to have, to have programs and services for folks with disabilities. Uh, so we decided to contract with, uh, the Spirit Club, so they are in control of their, um, fees and charges and services and things of that nature, and we just provide them the room to actually have the service. Um, I, we haven't done any research, um, to find out exactly how many residents would participate.
So we don't pay them for, for the contract, we just make the room available?
Yes, yes, we do.
But they will get a grant, and we make the room available at a very low cost.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Question?
Oh, Mr. Schultz, sorry, Councilmember Schultz.
Uh, you mentioned that you have waiting lists, sort of like you emphasize the word, waiting lists. What, can you sort of summarize very easily the, the kinds of programs for which you have waiting lists that you can't really fulfill?
Wow, um, that's a great question. We have waiting lists for our senior programs, for our, uh, most of our exercise programs for our seniors.
Like bone builders?
Bone builders, uh, Zumba, um, just, just about all of our senior classes have waiting lists. Um, yeah, most of the exercise classes. We also have waiting lists, um, for some of our mainstream, uh, classes and programs for adults and young people. For, right now, our camps are, uh, 95% full, so we actually have some waiting lists, um, in some of our camps.
That's for summer, this is for summer.
Yeah, our summer camps, yes. Um, um, camps that usually traditionally don't, uh, fill up until maybe the week before. Uh, like, there's a few camps over at the, uh, at the rec center. One that comes to mind is, uh, our basketball campus over there has actually filled up, um, about three weeks ago. So our, you know, programs and services are, are sort of popular.
Let me ask you, um, the, my, my, the perception that I get is that the more we do, we, meaning the recreation department, do, the bigger the demand gets. It's sort of like, uh, you know, getting punished for your success in a, in a sort of a way. Uh, is that a fair characterization, or is there another reason for this growth in demand that you can attribute?
I would like it to be that, you know, we offer good programs and services, and I, I would think that that's what it is. Um, I had, um, explained to, uh, city manager on several occasions that, um, I think that we're, we're, could get to a point if we continue to offer things where we run out of space. Our, um, rental revenue, um, is actually down, but it's, it's, it doesn't appear to be down because we're renting to the church on Sundays and, you know, that's a pretty large contract, but without that contract, um, our rental revenues would be actually down. But without that contract, our rental revenues would be actually down from where we started, just because we're taking up the space with the classes and programs and things that we're offering. We're actually running into a situation which we've decided to pull back a little bit, where the space for community meetings, the building, is a lot full in the evenings, you know, just for community meetings and.
Talking about this building or the Rec Center or both?
Yes, this building.
Oh, this building.
Yeah, the Rec Center is being heavily used throughout the evenings as well. They have classes and programs up there, and the rental revenue down, up there is down as well.
So we're running out of space gradually over the years because demand is increasing for, you know, our services as opposed to contracted outside users, for example. Is that what you're saying?
I would say that is correct.
But last year, I think it was, when you started at the Rec Center on New Hampshire Avenue, some programs targeted to seniors, you were proposing that, or you did, have those starting at 11:00 AM on a couple days of the week, instead of the normal opening time of like one or two in the afternoon. Is that something you think you're going to be, going to need to continue to do, is to open the Rec Center earlier?
Yes, well, right now, we just do it twice per week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Right.
And I would venture to say if we wanted to, you know, extend that and offer it more, that that's something that I believe that seniors would, those at 55-plus would take advantage of. And it actually would alleviate some of the pressures from, that we have down in this building and the demand, that we would be able to offer more up there.
Well, of course, all of this speaks to the need for a bigger, newer Rec Center someday.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Bye, thank you.
I think it also speaks to the fact that Montgomery County does not operate that much, offer that many programs in this area.
Okay, good. Glad to hear you say that, programs that people want.
And I would like to mention to Mr. Clark and others that for meeting space, the Fire Department is now renting out that space at fairly reasonable prices, and it's a good meeting space. So if we're, get filled up, we can send folks over to them.
Are there any other questions about this?
No, I think we can move on now to budget reconciliation. Is everyone okay with that? All right, just checking, make sure Councilmember Kreshi is still good with that. Okay, we can move on to reconciliation then.
Okay. I'll pass something out here that is my mock-up of things. I've tried to take the comments that I've heard, and some of this may or may not correctly reflect what people have identified for reconciliation items. But I did put it into a spreadsheet that we can add and subtract from a little bit. And on this, we have the breakdown of general fund revenues and general fund expenditures. And under general fund expenditures, we have the things that have been mentioned so far for reconciliation items. One is to reduce the general fund expenditures by $580,000, which reflects the cash available, if we bond, for the Ethan Allen and Flower Avenue Street projects. I show a wash here on the Police Community Relations of the $40,000. Throughout this list, it adds up to $100,000 for the savings on the health insurance, as we have identified that. I have put in here, and it has blood loan next to it, moving $27,000 from the Exterior Home Repair Program to be into the category of sustainability-related home repair work. This was something that was proposed by the Sustainability Manager. The budget had gone in, but she hadn't had a chance to review it at the time when it first went in, and so this was a slight modification that she requested. I have $5,000 for the Scholarship Fund that Councilmember Smith mentioned. Have a net of $170,000 for an Economic Development Position using the $50,000 that was in the budget for an Economic Development Study or Work, and $220,000 for the Economic Development Position that Councilmember Schultz has suggested by email. I have a reduction in expenditures to the Equipment Replacement Reserve that Councilmember Mail suggested, to bring the balance of the Equipment Replacement Reserve to what would cover five years' worth of expenditures, the current five years' worth of expenditures. There's an opportunity, I think, for a housing fund, and it can be about $300,000 worth, plus using the remainder of the Exterior Home Repair Program, which, if you take out the 27, it's really $93,000 as opposed to $100,000, but just, I didn't get that specific. There was a request to give $5,000 to the Folk Festival. And I left the space in case Councilmember Siemens wants to add more money to the Police Community Relations item. I think those were the main funding items that I heard. There were a number of discussion points about study, kind of task force approaches to a number of issues, identifying time when we might be able to work forward on something. Councilmember Kovar, you were talking about perhaps putting some funds towards a youth activity, a youth consultant or person or activity that would be kind of set aside and then designated at a time to be determined, but that's not reflected here. In any event, this is my first shot at reflecting this. Where it's important to me particularly is in the, I guess, the third block down that says Proposed General Fund, Unassigned Fund Balance. In the budget, that was about $3.3 million, which is about $300,000 over the amount that we feel is a good proxy for the ins and outs of the, of money during the course of the year. I am concerned, given the comments that have been made by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation, that with some of the assessments for large properties that are worth more than $2 million, that there may be some less property tax revenue expected than was originally told to us to expect. So I have identified about $200,000 that I feel needs to be a buffer in case we do not get all of the property tax revenue that was identified that could be expected. The last year that we had numbers, we received $150,000 less than was projected by the State Department of Assessment and Taxation. Our Finance Director has said, can you make that $300,000? But I've left it at $200,000, just to recognize that, to build a little bit of space in there. With the items that I have listed under the General Fund Expenditures, the pros and cons, the change in the general fund is to increase it by $341,000, which leaves about $444,000 over the $3 million that I'm, that I think we have to always keep available. So that's to provide some information. Yes?
Okay, one second. Can I, I want to say something first. The budget schedule is up, and I, just to kind of put some framework around our conversation tonight. The goal for this evening is really to put on this list anything that you want to add to the budget or subtract from the budget, so that we finish tonight with a fairly complete list that the staff can then go work with and provide us some definitive numbers, so that on Wednesday, May 4th, we can vote on them and finalize the list. So, you know, it's not always perfect, but that's the goal for this evening. So don't hold back. If there's something you want to put on that is going to take something off of what we have on the budget now or add something, I request that we do that this evening. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor.
Siemens, sorry.
I thank you, and I did want to quantify the one you have on here for Police Community Relations. And I would like to put in the amount that would bring that up to $80,000.
Okay, so $40,000 more.
Right. And then the one I mentioned last week, that I don't know if this is the proper list to put it on, but it seems appropriate to me, and that is for that Parent Advocacy and Training, $3,500. I think that is.
$3,500?
Yes, I think that's an appropriate amount for a, for a program that I think really addresses the point that we, the council, both this council and past councils have made, the desire to help, to make sure that kids don't move into the criminal justice system. And I think that I was very impressed with the program that I saw. I was impressed that it was able to, you know, motivate parents to come down here and really start advocating for their, for their children. And it's the best program that I've seen to date to address that issue. And I think it behooves the council to move forward with that and make an attempt at addressing the core issue, which is that the children get a proper education.
I'm sorry?
If I may, the idea is to have the parent engagement part of Lunch and Learn during the summer. So the $3,500, I think, would probably have to be part of the Lunch and Learn request, unless there's something different.
Is that what you were thinking of?
I hadn't tied it to the Lunch and Learn program. I was thinking of something that would be, you know, available for
A standalone?
Students citywide. I haven't talked with Councilmember Smith to understand, you know, whether it's with or without the Lunch and Learn program.
If I, one thing I didn't reflect here that has been talked about a little bit is to take some monies from the community grant program and put more as a partnership or other kind of category. So this could either be in addition to that, or it could be something that might be taken from that community grant fund. So that's just letting people know that there's some options with that.
Thank you.
All right, since nobody else has a light on, I will just raise, thank you, Councilmember Mail. Before Councilmember Mail goes, I just wanted to let folks know that we did receive the request from the Tacoma Park Folk Festival, asking for $5,000 more this year. We have budgeted already $10,000. They would like $15,000 overall for this year. And one of the reasons they talk about in their letter is that last year was just not as good for them in terms of revenue than they expected. And when I had my meeting with Ms. Clay, she said that comparing it across the board to other similar festivals, it was a down, kind of a down year across the board, and they're not sure why. They hope it was just kind of a blip last year, but that this year, they would request the $5,000. I know, Councilmember Schultz, you had asked whether or not they wanted more money this year. The answer I received was no, not this year. But next year will be the 40th anniversary of the Folk Festival, and they are thinking of plans that they may have regarding celebrating the 40th anniversary and maybe doing something in Sam Abbott's name and something like that. So there may be, next year, a higher request from the Folk Festival. And in addition to that, the members of the Folk Festival Committee wanted me to just put out a plea for people to get involved. The folks who have been doing it for a number of years are unfortunately leaving our town and moving back to the West Coast. And so I know we discussed this last year with the Fourth of July Parade, and the need for kind of some new folks to step up and to help out. So if anyone knows of people who would be very interested in working on the festival, I ask that you send their names to Colleen Clay. All right, now turning to Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. I think last week, at some point, I made a request for another reconciliation item for the cost of the, either, I think I said fixed poll.
That's right, that's right, and I don't have that number. We will add that in.
Okay. And I honestly don't know a number, in my mind, I'm thinking too, but it could be a different number.
Right.
So.
Yeah, that was on my list, and I forgot to pass that along to the Police Department.
Okay. When we vote on the property tax rate, that's a separate vote that would have amendments separate from reconciliation list? So, for example, we talked about having the property tax keep a constant yield. So, and a proposed reconciliation item is that, but it can all, I don't know, I just don't know if you're tracking that as a reconciliation item?
I, I am, I would prefer to see it as part of the reconciliation list so we can balance what the numbers are.
So moved.
But, okay, but it would be something that would be specifically identified as, you know, half cent or cent, you know, whatever, or a certain total amount.
Right, so if you could provide that, which I think is in the materials already, what the, what the cent difference would be to keep the, to keep the yield rate at more or less constant?
Right, to keep the, to keep the yield rate more or less, it's just about $700,000. It's like 696 or something.
And let me propose one amendment to that, which is the, the change that I'd like to see is the amount that is $200,000 more than constant yield. Right, so whatever the constant yield amount is, add $200,000, because you have some expectation that we may not get $200,000. So factoring in the $200,000.
So it would be like a $500,000 drop as opposed to, okay.
Yeah. I'd like to see the savings associated with no new FTEs, excepting the move of the number of positions from Housing and Community Development to the Police Department. But other than that, keeping total FTEs the same. So, I mean, that's still the same, it's just shifting where they are.
Okay, so that's, that's not the new code enforcement, environmental code enforcement position or any of the part tiers?
So, throughout the budget, well, in some sections of the budget, there are small increases in FTEs.
Right.
And so what I'd like to see is a flat FTE number between last year and this year, as a reconciliation item. And then the, I think, apologies, I cannot remember the answer to this question. The Services and Charges line in the Police Department budget went up from $88,000 in 2015 to $169,000 estimated this year. And in an early message about the budget, I asked that question, and I just can't recall what city manager said was the answer for the increase in services.
I'm sorry, could you repeat what you, the amount that you were talking about?
Yeah, so we had a roughly $88,000 charge for, across the whole Police Department for Services and Charges in either '14 or '15. That number goes up to $169,000 budgeted in this budget year.
That was for the payment of the, the contract for the parking processing, parking ticket processing.
So that was a contract for a credit card?
Well, it's, it's the, for each payment through their system, yes, there's a certain charge. So it goes up because we're getting more revenue. So the revenue went up substantially from the parking fines, but, you know, from $200,000 to $500,000, but the increase of processing that increased number also went up.
Could you, so if this is acceptable to my colleagues, one of the things that's helpful is also to amend the budget narrative in places. And this would be a place where it would just be helpful to add a couple of sentences explaining essentially what you described. We pay this much for the services of the.
I thought we did it, but I'll double-check and make sure it's in there.
If you could check and just, and just let me know, that'd be great. And that's it for now.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you. This is something that I think was on the material that Jason may have circulated in response to a few questions I asked, but I've mentioned this a few times, I think. I do believe that the Let's Play America events that are held in the city are good and draw people from all over the place, and is a diverse crowd. They cooperate twice a year. They cooperate twice a year with the rec department on those events and the other events they do on their own. According to the initial information from the assistant city manager, deputy city manager, it costs twenty-three hundred dollars for those two events. I believe the mayor had asked for a more complete cost estimate, which we don't have yet in terms of not just the actual expenses written out, but the staff costs. And we can probably get that, I assume. So I'd like to explore what it would cost to do that four times a year instead of twice a year. So I assume it's a little bit over twenty-three hundred dollars, but not way over that.
It was thirty hours of staff time approximately, so there's obviously a cost to thirty hours of staff time.
I mean, is there an estimate of...
We can get it for you.
Yeah, okay. So when we get that number, that's something I would just like to have on the table. In addition, there's several things that have, that have come up, which I think maybe aren't ripe to have as a dollar request yet, but would benefit from having a deeper look and then maybe figure out how much is involved in figuring that and if it's something that the staff can just figure out. So I include within that understanding more about what we do for the different translation services and what would involve expanding that. If that is something that you come back and say would involve an excessive amount of staff time to figure it out, then we could decide what to do. And I think that's something that would benefit us to be able to look at. And similarly, on the question of moving toward carbon neutrality within the city, which is a goal that we talked about some in the context of the council priorities. And I believe Gina Mathias had sent a response about that. And it actually gets to some fairly complex questions of what, if the council wanted to do it, what it would even mean because there's different ways of achieving that. And you could do it partly by purchasing offsets, which to me isn't really what we would probably want to do in Tacoma Park because that's sort of like, on paper, you did it, but did you actually achieve it? But I think it would be helpful to at least understand what would be involved in that. And then just a couple of other things sort of along those lines. We had talked about the stormwater program and the extent to which there could be some sort of offset or I don't think we can call it credit since it's a fee, but some sort of recognition if individual homeowners undertake action within their own yards and so on to help better manage that through rain gardens and things like that. And I believe that the city manager had said that's something we can kind of figure out for the next budget cycle. So I'd just like to have that on there. And I'm also going to throw out there, which was mentioned the other night, and I know we'll have a presentation from someone in the community on this on Wednesday when we have the public hearing on taxation, is the inventory tax. And I think it probably is something that's affected the most, actually, in Councilmember Schultz's district, where there's more businesses than there are in Ward One. But the question is whether it's a deterrent in some ways to getting small businesses to come here, which is something that I think we all would sort of say we would like to do in general. And Tacoma Park is one of the few places that has both a high percentage, one point five five percent tax on the inventory, and also a hundred percent of that amount. Other communities have a percentage, in some cases, one percent or less, but they exempt anywhere from, you know, forty to a hundred percent of it. So we have both the full amount and a high amount. And for smaller businesses, that could be significant. Obviously, if you change that, it does reduce the amount that we have. But I think after, there's a presentation from the community on Wednesday, maybe we can have one further discussion about it. And I'd be interested at that point in seeing what my colleagues thought. So I'll stop there for the moment.
Councilmember Schultz?
I'd just like to respond to Councilmember Kovaar's questions about the inventory tax or some of the points that you've raised. Of course, the really, the question there is to what extent the inventory tax might deter businesses from relocating into the city. Of course, what the inventory of tax only going to affect are those businesses that maintain inventory. There's an awful lot of businesses in our city that, small, but they just, they aren't, they don't carry inventory. And, and on top, you know, so I'm not sure what that size is. But I, I would not, I mean, this is just right off the top of my head. My feeling is, is that I don't think it's a conscious thing that people are going to think about when they decide they're going to open up a business, say, in, in the Crossroads area or some other, some other areas. I think what happens is that businesses get here, they open, and then all of a sudden they realize, well, we have this inventory tax. Gosh, I didn't know about that. And golly, it seems punitive or something of that nature, but they're already here. And so they're kind of in a bind. I think that's where we could probably reward, you know, help businesses feel better about being here by adjusting the inventory tax or doing something else with it. That's just, just an observation on my part.
Yeah, if I can just respond, I think probably most don't realize when they come here and after they get here. I think that's right. But, you know, there are businesses, in particular those that focus on, you know, selling artistic kinds of things, which might keep a lot of material on hand and only sell it occasionally. I think, you know, how you manage the flow and if you have to have a lot on hand right at the end of the year for the holidays, because that's when you kind of make a lot of your money, you could get whacked on that without necessarily...
I'd like to have us take the time to ask some of the businesses at some point in the future.
I think, Councilmember Kovaar, if I can just, for your clarification, you were not asking to add that to the reconciliation item, but asking that we do have that conversation in the future. Is that correct?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to hear, I know that there's going to be a presentation about it on Wednesday and maybe have one last chance at a little conversation about that. I would not propose eliminating the entire thing. It raises three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. But, you know, maybe as part of our overall discussion, we could look at that. I understand that for a lot of people, you haven't thought about it yet. I respect that also. But I'd like to at least wait and hear this comment on Wednesday. I do know that when I was campaigning, it was mentioned to me by a lot of business owners, a lot of business owners. It was surprising. It wasn't something that I knew about, so.
And Councilmember Kareshi has a question, so if I go to him and then...
Come back to me.
Yeah, I will come back to you. Councilmember Kareshi?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Here's my, my question is, and this, I guess, goes to the mayor and it also goes to Ms. Ludlow and then maybe Councilmember Seaman. I've seen the evolution of this amount that we have asked for with respect to the police community relations consultant and it listed in the budget reconciliation list as forty thousand dollars as increased by staff from the previous amount. And now we're going to eighty thousand potentially, but that's what Councilmember Seaman's request is. I just was wondering what kind of research we've done within the city staff to determine what is a reasonable amount for a potential consultant to do that kind of work, which I consider valuable, but it seems to be numbers in disguise. So that's, that's my question.
Just to be clear, the forty thousand dollars just listed is simply carryover from the current year of money that we have not spent. I think that there, there's several different approaches of ways that funds could be spent. One of the things that we wanted to do was to go through and identify a variety of tasks and activities as a group, and then where we felt that we needed to have some outside eyes, some testing, some, maybe some surveying, or those kinds of things that make sense to identify those. You know, if we had a terrible police department that needed full-scale, top-to-bottom review, we're talking two hundred thousand dollars. We're not in that situation. What we want to do is to look at, you know, where are areas of concern of the council and the community? Where are things that we'd like to try? Where are some, some things that we'd like to see evaluated as to best practices? So to me, somewhere in that forty thousand dollar range is actually pretty decent, but it could go a little bit higher. And I appreciate the interest of the staff, of the council to support that.
Yeah, this is Councilmember Seaman's. And the additional money that I requested this year is follow on to the fact that we had put in the budget last year, requests for the police community relations contract. The first round of requests for proposals came back. We were told that had gotten no response, and so the council added more money to that. It went out again, and we were told that we did not get any adequate responses to that. So my feeling is, this is of paramount importance that in this, in this day and age, it behooves us to take a look at this. Not that we have a problem in our police department, but, but I think as everyone has acknowledged, there's always room for improvement, and we want to be on the leading edge, not the trailing edge of this type, of this particular issue. So yes, the recommendation that I made for an additional forty thousand dollars is not a scientific amount. It was just based on the fact that we have not, after a full year of trying, have not gotten a contractor that was interested in doing it that the city manager felt was appropriate. So I just want to make sure it gets done. And my original thought was, say, a hundred thousand dollars, if that's what it took, we, we need to get it done. And I'm flexible on the amount, but I don't want us to overlook this opportunity.
And I'll just add that I was going to, I guess, make a friendly amendment to what Councilmember Seaman's put forward and say that I think one of the things to help move us forward is actually, I'm proposing that we have a council committee that works with the staff that would move this forward. So three of us, I'd like to include myself on it, since I was the first one to propose the money last year, and others who would join, who would sit down and actually look more carefully at the responses we've received from the RFP, what and how we want to proceed with this. If we can put money in the budget as we're going through this reconciliation item, I agree with Councilmember Seaman's that this is, it's a good place to invest our money to make sure that we're moving forward with this and put a priority on it. But I think most importantly, having more engaged back and forth with the council and a subgroup, the council will help move us forward.
And I certainly would support that amendment. I would like to see us still keep an open mind on not letting money be the problem when it gets down to deciding what we're going to do.
Can I ask a question on the subject? And that is, isn't it possible to issue a request for proposals that describes a scope of services that we want without describing the dollar limitations that we have to spend? So if we say we need the following inputs, guidance, whatever you want to call it, and then we get the bids in without limit and see what, what we get back, then wouldn't that give us a lot of good valuable feedback as to what we can afford and what's really important for us to be able to find out and whether or not we want to spend forty, eighty, a hundred, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars on it? Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, is that a possibility?
Right. I, I appreciate that. I think, I, I think that this is a good thing for a discussion of a group to really look through the items. I thought that the scopes, scopes of service that we identified were flexible. The entity that, of the two that came back, two proposals came back. One of them was a decent proposal, but most of the money was spent on travel, so I was not pleased with that. And so I think going through that item with councilmembers makes a lot of sense.
Great. So we'll go back to Councilmember Schultz then.
Okay. One of the things that in my reconciliation proposal was the elimination of fifty thousand dollars that the city manager had proposed for an economic development study.
Or work. I was not specific about study.
Or, or work, okay. Study or work, okay. And I, I have said, oh, well, we can delete that in favor of doing something else. But the thing is, is that to this point in time, if memory serves me right, really, I haven't really heard what it was that staff was hoping to be, you know, what was in your mind or your staff's mind with what you hoped that fifty thousand dollars might be able to work on. Can we, is that possible that we can get some input on that? Because if I'm saying, oh, no, I'm just arbitrarily saying, let's just not spend that fifty thousand, but maybe you would say, well, we could do X, Y, and Z and a couple of other things besides with that. And that might turn out to be something that would be really, really valuable.
The kinds of things that I mentioned before for this, I think there's, there's two elements that are particularly important. One is business retention and expansion. Because the best thing that you can do in general is to keep your businesses and allow them and help them expand. So that's, that's one of those things that is always there, especially as we have uncertainty with purple line construction and things, that is an area where I think we have to focus. The other is in, is in marketing ourselves. So I think that there's a lot that can be done with that. And whether it's some study about some areas about how and what we market or it's actually doing the marketing activities themselves, I think there's a number of those things that could be very useful. I think that those are the things, the kinds of things that, you know, a person that you were talking about or a consultant would be, be doing in any event because those are the things that get you the, the most buck, bang for the buck with an area like we have.
Okay. I don't know if any staff, any of us have, want to react to that. But one of the reasons that I drafted the reconciliation in the detail that I did was to be able to help all of us understand what, what falls under the rubric of economic development. Because we've often said, well, we, we want to do economic development. It's kind of like, obviously, a logical thing to do. But when we get to the, the what and the how, then I think we kind of get into cloudy waters. And, and I was, by, by being able to delineate a bunch of things that would be helpful to the city, that's what I was trying to, to get to. I am not absolutely wedded. I'm not saying, you know, we have to do it this my way or I'm just going to get into a big haramph. I don't really care how we get, get to this process. But I think we, what I was trying to say is that we need to get started now, and we need to be doing something very specific that moves, moves the, you know, the agenda forward, particularly on our eastern main, you know, state highways, the eastern side of the city. But really, anywhere in the city where it's, where it's needed, including Flower Avenue and places like that. So I'm really willing to be flexible in, in, in exploring this. And I just don't want any of us to think, well, Fred says this is it. We either do it this way or he's going to be, you know.
Well, I really appreciated the detail that you provided. Some of the things that I've been looking at, part of the role of a county lobbyist is to make the connections with the county's economic development entities so that there's perhaps a shared person or some other kind of joint effort so that it's not us sharing, kind of shouldering the whole load. And so, you know, that's something that I think is critical. They're the ones that have the funds.
I agree.
And it really is supposed to be their job. I recognize that we don't rely on them for that, but it is really supposed to be their job. And I think we have a similar outreach that we would want to do to Prince George's County and to the state.
Yes.
Because we're looking at, you know, a tri-jurisdictional area, and we do need to identify how that, how that gets developed. identify how that gets developed. It's in all three of ours' best interest. And so, you know, the attention is going to be to that, how exactly money is identified for it and spent. I think it's still a little bit of an open question and I appreciate the discussion.
Thank you. That's all I want to say right now.
Councilmember May.
Thank you. The message the deputy city manager sent today with some background on the inventory tax. Excuse me. It didn't come through. My email was too big. The file was too big. So if there's any chance you could PDF that or send it in a smaller version, I think you sent it, the third file was, it opened briefly on my phone.
Oh, was it, you know, the Excel file is very complex with lots of colors and stuff, so it does take up a lot of room.
I started printing it out and really realized this was going to wipe out.
Send him his two messages because I think it was probably a helpful document.
Okay, my apologies.
It was a tease. I was like, oh, this is going to be great.
It actually is really interesting.
Yeah, it is.
And then I couldn't open it.
It's a very large file.
A couple of questions and then I'm going to ask a question associated with the library. The first is that I'd like to propose a separate reconciliation, a couple of separate reconciliation items around the housing fund. The first is similar to what's set up now, the $400,000, the amount wouldn't be different, but I'd like to set it up as a housing reserve, meaning that the money that is not spent in this year, if, depending on what policy council decides to pursue, would remain in that account for next year. And so it wouldn't be, I remember with sustainability, we appropriated $120,000 and then we didn't use it and then we lost the money the next year. And so I'd like to propose that as a reserve, the creation of a reserve. And to the extent that there's any, having not been on the council during the time that a reserve was created, if there are any special considerations.
I'll find out if there's anything special that has to do with that.
Please let us know. The second is a second version of the reduction in the equipment reserve. And I'd like to have it be a plus of that same amount of money, so that's $144,000, a plus to what I'll still call a housing reserve, but specifically associated with the kinds of goals that Councilmember Kovar referenced. So $144,000 in addition to the $400,000 that would be set aside for buying low-income homeowners' shares of solar farms or paying for installations of solar panels on roofs. So essentially a green energy housing fund that would, again, be funded by the reduction in the equipment replacement reserve. So you just call it, you know.
So you would just be moving it out of the equipment replacement reserve contribution to this other?
Yeah. And again, it's not, that's not to replace a vote on just reducing the equipment replacement reserve.
And what's the 144? Can you remind what that represents within that?
So I asked the city staff to come up with a number that would reflect what would the balance in our equipment replacement reserve need to be, that if we didn't make a single additional deposit for the next five years, we would have paid for all of our equipment today.
So what I did was I took in the budget book, it has a CIP for five years, and I added up those amounts. And it's, that total amount is about $144,000 less than the reserve would be if we contributed the full $800,000. The area that, I will say that I am nervous about that is that, and I'll get the full list, but after five years, there's some big numbers, so we may have to end up paying a good amount to keep that kind of five-year look down the road.
Big numbers, meaning like bigger trucks?
No, yes, that's right. More things at the same time. And so then, so then instead of putting out $800,000 or, you know, $650,000, we'd have to put out 900 or 1.1 million or something like that. So that's where I get a little nervous.
And my philosophy on something like this is that we're paying for the trucks and police cars of residents five years from now, have completely paid for those. And so given a choice between paying for solar panels for low-income residents today or paying for trucks six years from now instead of five years from now, I would put a priority over that. And the last question concerning the library space or IT space, I'm not sure exactly where it is in the budget. We have computers set aside for seniors, but I don't believe we have a computer space set aside for teens.
No, I mean, we have three computer rooms. And so we have one that's for seniors, we have one that's for anyone, and then we have one that's kind of a quiet room for anyone.
So where is the, and youth are allowed in either of the anyone rooms?
That's correct.
Okay. Right. Never mind. I won't make the proposal then. I was going to propose to put money in the budget for, my understanding is that the room with, I think it's all apples, next to, in that octagonal space, is almost never used or not used?
It's used by the cable staff primarily.
But I think the, I thought the intent of that room originally was to purchase equipment for public use.
And, you know, we have some classes that do use that. We do training for especially young people who learn city TV skills, and so we still do that. But I think we're looking at maybe moving that into a different place, but still having that role of training.
Okay. If you could actually let me know the, as a reconciliation item, the cost of being able to open that room up for after-school hours for teens?
Okay.
Whatever our teen room is open for, what are the hours for our teen room?
Two to eight.
So approximately two to 8:00 P.M. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I'm sorry, can I jump in with one other thing?
Go ahead.
Sorry. Thanks. Regarding the, just since this was a point of discussion before, the $40,000 grant for police community relations, what I'd rather see us do as an example is to sponsor a conference called Innovation in Small City Police Community Relations, where we use $40,000 to, A, livestream the event, because this room only seats roughly 100 people, B, pay for a couple of city police chiefs or other city leaders who have done something really meaningful that would be relevant to a city like Tacoma Park, and C, put on a conference that invites, again, police chiefs, government officials, and consultants and advocacy groups, et cetera, from the region to come here and be participants in a conference that talks about innovations that would matter in building a better relationship or just a strong relationship between community and the police force and in particular focused on the same kinds of subsets of the community that we focused on before. I think something like that, to me, would yield a quicker return on investment, would get us excited about what's possible and would, could be done more quickly than either a 40 or $80,000 item. So I say that just because we're talking about some of the policy behind this. I don't know what something like that would cost and it's obviously variable. But to me, that's something that I would really be excited about in this space because I think it's an important subject. But I feel like the track we're on is going to lead to frustration whether we spend $40,000 or $80,000. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I would ask that before we actually vote on the reconciliation items, on the reconciliation item that Councilmember May proffered, the $144,000 reduction in the equipment reserve, can you give us a narrative that says what the choices are?
About the ER?
Yes. That says that if we do this, it might cost us $900,000 in the actual list of these items that we would have to pay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. The other thing is I would like to say that I support Councilmember Schultz's proposal to have an economic development position, but I would like to hear from staff how you would implement it. Because we have been talking about this for last, I don't know, four years now and we have not made any progress moving forward. And I think this is a real opportunity with his proposal that has a lot of flesh on it and whether or not you think you could see us really doing something in the next six months with this proposal. And then finally, I just want to prepare you that there probably will be an additional request for man up and lunch and learn. My meeting with Lynn Sobeloff from Montgomery County Collaboration Council was tabled, so I don't know what that number is yet, but I just want to prepare you for that. Park of Montgomery kids will be a part of this program. We don't know how many of them and how much they are actually going to contribute.
Okay, so this would be above the $60,000.
Yes. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I know we're not talking about these reconciliation items in detail tonight, but since quite a bit has been talked about on the reduction in the equipment reserve, I just wanted to go on record saying that I do not support that because it flies in the face of the purpose of the reserve, which is to amortize the cost of replacement equipment over the life of that equipment. And I'm sure we'll be talking about more of that in more detail later, but thank you.
Councilman Kovar?
Thanks. Just a few things to respond to some of the other comments. On the economic development position, which Councilmember Smith just referred to and which my friend from Ward Six made reference to, I think we may get to a point where we'd want that, but I'm a little nervous it might be premature. And in looking at the material that was circulated, one phrase struck me, which was among the list of the tasks. It was, look at the economic tools that other similarly sized North American cities are using to enhance quality of life, tax-based growth and job growth to benefit low and moderate income levels in our city. And it struck me that maybe we should do that part, possibly with the study that the city manager is talking about or some version of that, have a consultant to see what's out there, and then we can decide. Because, I mean, I think a lot of the things that were discussed in the proposal looked pretty good, but I don't know if those are the right things for us. And so that's why I was thinking that we might want to kind of answer that one, item six or whatever it was in the proposal, see what else other similarly situated cities are doing, and then using that to potentially, next time around, you know, look at hiring somebody. That's just kind of my initial reaction to that, so happy to talk further about it.
I'm not adverse to what you're saying, I'm not adverse to what you're saying on that. If I felt that in the FY 2018 budget that we would begin dealing with 11 months from now, 10 months, that we would maybe be making a commitment, and for that fiscal year, to do some of the things that I'm talking about now. My concern is, is that at this point in time, I just don't want us to be satisfied with doing, spending $50,000 on some stuff that needs, that would be interesting and useful to do, including what you just said, but not really knowing, well, what's going to happen after that. And that's why I'm nervous in the other direction, is that it'd just be another year come and gone and we'll still be kind of like discussing, well, what do we mean by economic development? And I don't want to listen to that anymore. I'm tired of it.
Yeah, I think if we got a good sense for what other small to medium-sized cities are doing, then they would be positioned in a better way to do that. So that probably doesn't exactly answer what your concern is, but I have two other things I just wanted to mention, but I'd love to keep talking about that.
Okay.
We talked some the other day and we may talk about it again on Wednesday when the Comcast contract comes up, and I've talked to the city manager and the mayor about this. And I think we're probably doing okay with that money that's sitting there, but I still would like to take another run at figuring out if there are some creative ways of using the money. It's not strictly speaking a reconciliation item because, as I understand it, that money in the reserves for the cable TV just sort of sits there. And if we can find another way to use it later, that'll be separate from anything that's in the budget in a direct sense, right?
That's right. I mean, I think that we certainly will continue to use it on cable stuff.
The regular things, yeah.
I do see that a good portion can be used towards the improvements of the library and the police department. So that's something that I'm, I'd love to contribute to the capital costs of those items.
Right. So I guess the question would be, after that is done or is planned for, if the library construction goes forward, if there's more left over, to me, having, getting some input from the community in terms of what would folks who live in the city like to see? Would they like to see us make efforts, if we could, toward some sort of better digital system that addresses the homework gap and some of these other things? And I don't know whether the answer to that is to have some separate outside group composed of people from different parts of the city and who are experts on some of these telecom issues to get together and explore that, but that's something that I'd like to at least look at. Again, that doesn't have to be in the budget since this is outside the budget, but toss that out there. Anyway, I may mention it more on Wednesday. And the one other thing that we had talked about, and this gets to how we use maybe some of the youth funding, and this idea was mentioned earlier, I think, also, and seems like I'm talking about a lot of task forces, but they don't have as big a bite on the budget. But we had talked about a task force on children, youth, and families or some version of that would involve, again, people from around the city recommending, what are some of the programs that we really need beyond what we have? And I know we're going to have this meeting on the 18th, is that when the community conversation is?
On June 18th, yeah.
Depending on how, June 18th, depending on how that goes, I think the idea of appointing or, you know, selecting and having them meet over a period of six months, a task force within the city to make recommendations, they would finish well in advance of when we'd have to put together the next budget, would be something I think also would make sense. And again, I don't know what kind of cost it would be for something like that.
There's not very much to cost.
Right.
It's just staff.
Well, staff has a cost.
It's part of what we look at.
Right, okay. But I'd like us to look at that also.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
On an entirely different subject that I, and that is with regard to the future recreation center. Last year, we contracted with and completed two consultant studies. Which were necessary and valuable inputs into getting us started down the path of thinking about what our recreation needs are and if they could be accommodated on the current site of the existing recreation center. But I don't, but in looking at the budget on page 106, it says, management objectives, work with Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning Commission to establish the next steps for Tacoma Park Recreation Center development. And I think that's about all that I see that has anything, and this, I'm really asking a question if I'm being accurate here. In this proposed budget, that has anything to do with advancing the future development of a rec center, whatever form it might take, whether it's a new, you know, there's all these possible possibilities.
Yeah, I actually see this more in the realm of the economic development discussions than anything else. You know, how do we, how do we have that as a centerpiece of some kind of an economic development activity or swap out the land or do those kinds of things? So I see it as, we got very good recommendations for what could be done if we just decided that we just want a rec center and we want it to build on the base. And we have a model in Prince George's County that they use the same kind of, they had the same footprint and they expanded on it and it, so that's an option. But I think that its location on New Hampshire Avenue really is part of the discussion with economic development. And so for that reason, you know, I think part of this, so there's that. There's also this whole discussion that will be coming to you about what do we do with some of these large parcels in the town? How do we, how do we manage what happens on the hospital property, John Evans Andrews, Washington McLaughlin? How do these things fit together, meet the needs that we have as a community and provide not only kind of the recreational space, which we need, and maybe even some kind of artistic size space of that, but how do we then also leverage some of that for some of the economic development desires that we have? I still see it as a puzzle that I don't see how it's exactly put together, but I think it ends up being a major force of what we work on over the next year or two. it ends up being a major force of what we work on over the next year or two. Because we've got discussions going on about can we get a pool in on, you know, an aquatic center? Does that, what does that mean in terms of if Montgomery County Recreation actually starts providing some recreation services? Maybe that frees up a little bit of what happens at the New Hampshire Avenue site to do something else that the community needs, or we can swap out that land. So I see a lot of discussions coming, just even in the next few months. So it's hard for me to say that there's an answer, but it's much in play.
Well, I would say it's impossible for you to say there isn't, what the answer is.
Well, yeah, of course, it's impossible for me to say at this point.
It is. And I am so glad you just said what you said because I couldn't agree more that it is a very, very complicated ball of wax, for lack of a better word.
But we have opportunities that we haven't had before, which is nice.
Yeah, no, I know we do. And it's almost like an embarrassment of riches in terms of opportunities. I wouldn't go riches, probably overstating it. But there's just, but my point is that in this budget, I don't see anything that says this is something that's really important that we're going to be working on this year. I mean, unless it's just built into the work program.
It's built into the work program.
And then, let me finish.
Yep, sorry.
Does our existing staff have, do we have that capacity to do all the other things that we're very earnest about and take this on as well? Because, in other words, you, reading this budget, you wouldn't know that that was a big piece of our agenda for FY 17.
It's not something that has a big monetary, a big monetary component to it at this moment. When we prepared the priority document after the council met, this was one of the items that was specified that we will be working on. It's part of the balance that we're looking at. And so I think that one of the, does, do we have staff capacity for this? I think we do because there's so many interlocking initiatives for which these things go into play. It's very good that we had the consultant report, so we have background material when we're ready to apply it.
Right.
So I actually, I actually think we're in a good place, but it, I didn't see, and I don't know how to estimate, a budget number that would go with it.
Yeah, well, I think it's something we ought to, I'd like to have some more conversation about it.
Absolutely. It sounds good.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else? I just wanted to add one thing on the partnerships and put on the list to move $50,000 from the small, the community grants to there, and I'd like to see that potentially cover maybe what councilmember Siemens talked about, about the parent advocacy and training, and potentially what councilmember Smith raised with Lunch and Learn. I'd again like to see us move toward this framing of building these partnerships in our community with advocacy organizations and nonprofits that can deliver these services that are priorities for the council, and to move away from as much as possible sort of these one-shot things that we add to our reconciliation item every year. I think, one, they'll be, will be more effective at addressing our priorities, and the second thing is we'll be better able to assist the organizations in doing their work and build their capacity. So I'd like to do that. And I think that's it for me. I think everything else was kind of covered. Does city manager have anything to?
No, I think this is very helpful. We'll compile this information, get it out to you in advance. If there's any specificity that somebody has, please get it to us very soon so that, you know, we have a document that you can all review. And then we'll have that information for, wow, May 4th.
Yeah. Councilmember Kovar, you too.
Can you just clarify how the voting will work on May 4th?
So, yeah, actually, I was going to say that. And so it can get complicated. And so what I would like to propose, but don't hold me to it because I may change my mind, is that because councilmember Mayall put on the table, the, looking at the constant yield, that we deal with that first because that has implications then as we move down the list.
Right.
So if we're going to change the recommendation from the city manager and have less money revenue coming in, that then impacts what we can do down the list. So I think the first item we will address during reconciliation is the constant yield. And so after that, then, we'll know, okay, that means we have X amount of money, and then we'll just, we'll move down the list that way. And we may, as we go through it, when the city manager provides it, and beforehand, we'll put it in order in which we'll take the votes, and if people would like to reprioritize that after we do the constant yield, we can do that.
I guess the only question I would have would be that, I mean, could we get some sort of estimated redone version of this sheet? Because I wouldn't know how to vote on that without knowing kind of what all this jumble.
Yeah, and I can put it in a couple of different ways so that, so that there's different combinations that you can look at. I'll try to do that so it's simple to use.
I mean, every year it gets a little, but I think if we deal with the constant yield first, it gets clearer.
The other thing just to know about the tax rate, I mean, the, every cent is about $210,000. A half a cent is $105,000. So, you know, if you decide not to do the full constant yield rate, but you want to do something, you know, this may be something that you look at after you've gone through your full list and you see what the balance is and make a determination if there's something you want to do with that. But I think there's some flexibility in how you look at those things. I'll try to lay it out in a couple of different ways.
Is it too much to ask to have this Excel spreadsheet built where we can move the numbers around and?
It's in an Excel spreadsheet, so I'm happy to send it to you that way.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
But just the last question, I just want to understand. So just to be clear, though, if the constant yield is not approved, that doesn't mean that it automatically goes to the current level. The tax rate could be anywhere in there depending on what we approve.
Well, if you want to put on the reconciliation list now that you would like to see the tax rate something else, that's, you could put that on. So councilmember Mayall?
Right now, the only two choices are the two.
You can, you can vote to amend.
Right, and we can amend. It's not, right.
But at the moment.
I didn't mean to say like you have to do it now. At the moment, right.
I didn't interpret that. But if the constant yield is not approved, does that mean by default it would go to the proposed level? Or does that just mean now it's in play and?
Well, that's what it would mean until you would make an amendment to do it, something different.
Okay.
Just want to put something on the floor.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Right. So next week, yeah, May 4th, unless somebody wants, as we're moving forward, we'll start with, as councilmember Mayall put out, the $500,000 less, about that.
About $500,000.
Right.
And I think, you know, one of the things that I think's been very useful about going through these things tonight is that this coming Wednesday is the opportunity for the public to speak both on the tax rate and on the budget items. And so I think it's very useful that you've talked about it so people can actually speak their mind to that and you can consider that before the decision's on the floor.
Okay? Does that make sense? No, maybe. We'll see on May 4th. Thank you very much.
Thanks.